So at this time, I'm going to call to order the work session in the Maricopa County Community Colleges District Governing Board for October 2020. And for the record, I am going to call attendance of board members. I do understand Ms. Munoz is unable to join us today. If that changes for the meeting at some point, she'll indicate so. With that, I'm going to start role, and I'll start with you, Mr. Hendricks. Are you present?
Yes, I'm present.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath. Mrs. McGrath, are you unmuted yet?
I'm present. Did you unmute me?
You're good. I heard you. Thank you. Dr. Norene.
I'm doing good. I'm always good.
Thank you. Dr. Norene.
I'm good as well, and I'm here.
Perfect. Mr. Sarr.
I'm here.
Dr. Thor.
I'm here.
Ms. Nguyen.
I'm also here.
And with my presence, there's a quorum with the board, full quorum, 7-0. And Dr. Gonzalez, I know that you've joined us this afternoon. So welcome back from your brief vacation. So today, sorry, I kind of jumped in there. So today, as we're going to hear from the Maricopa Community Colleges Foundation during the work session. And with that, Dr. Gonzalez, I'm going to pass it to you to present, Mr. Spicker.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, CUC, and guests that are with us during the work session. I'd like to welcome Rudy Parga, who serves as the Chair of the Foundation Board, and also Brian Spicker, who's serving as the interim CEO for the board. And you're right, I'm still on vacation. I just came in for these two meetings, and then I'll be back out and return to work fully on Thursday, in case anybody's wondering what I'm here for. Thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan. I'll turn it over to Brian Spicker at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chancellor. I'm going to turn it over to our board chair, Rudy. So with that, thank you, President Sullivan. Yes, hi. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Rudy Parga. President Sullivan, governing board members, Chancellor, and members of the audience, I want to start by saying thank you for your time today and the opportunity to provide an update to the governing board. I also want to thank the governing board members who have served on the foundation board, as well as the Chancellor and the presidents. And lastly, I want to thank the volunteer board members who make up the foundation, as well as our partners from the college presidents and Resource Development Council. We are going to be as respectful of everybody's time as possible, but I do want to thank the governing board for the collaborative nature and allowing us this opportunity just to give an update today. We are going to give just a brief overview. If you look at the agenda in terms of what we'd like to kind of deep dive into our presentation, Brian and I will be presenters, and we will have Jonathan Robles and Judy Sanchez to answer any details needed. We'd like to open up for questions, but of course, if there are some questions that any of you have, please don't hesitate to ask them at the time that you have them. If you think it turns to the next slide deck, which identifies a foundation board membership, I just wanted briefly to take a moment and share the individuals that serve on our board. I'm not going to go through any detail with respect to it, but I just wanted to let the governing board be aware of the different board membership. If we could then turn to the next slide, please. The board representation by sector slide, I just want to add a few things. We have been, as a foundation, very intentional in the development of our board and its membership. The next several slides will depict the workforce and industry sectors represented, as well as the background, experience, and caliber of the individuals. It's important, from the foundation's perspective, that we tightly align to the workforce and industry priorities of our colleges and district. If you go through just briefly the slide number four, and it continues on, I believe, to slide deck number five, I'm not going to go into detail, but we have covered manufacturing, utilities, corporations, and legal, IT and cybersecurity. We also have architecture and construction. We also have membership from finance, insurance, real estate, and tourism. And then finally, we also have membership from the business development and nonprofit sectors. We thought it would just be important to kind of highlight this information. We know that's been provided to the board earlier. And lastly, on slide deck number six, I want to finish off that, of course, representation includes education, as well as some of our other board members as well. We are grateful to our district and college leadership, supporting the foundation and participating on our board. Our success is tightly bound to the district and the system. At this point in time, we're going to move to the slide number, please, the assessment update. I'm going to take this opportunity to turn it over to Brian. And before I do so, I do want to just share some thoughts. The foundation board has been incredibly fortunate to have Brian in the leadership role. I've often told many people that I can't imagine our board being led by anyone else but Brian during these times. He has, time and time again, not only met our expectations, but exceeded them, and we're just very grateful for Brian's continued service in that role. So with that, Brian, I'm going to turn it over to you.
President. Really appreciate the opportunity.
Mr. Spicker, we're having a difficult time hearing you.
I'm sorry. Do you hear me now?
We have some echoing and background noise.
Okay. Let me do this. I'm going to try my headset. How is this now, Elsa?
Great.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to start the review and update with an assessment update, because it was so important for the foundation to take the work that was done by a consultant, Beowana Morphes, and really look at our performance, how we can be a higher-performing foundation, and how we're running heard with other colleges of our size. So we took the assessment to heart. We had a board subcommittee review each item, and then we set about tackling the recommendations that came out of the assessment. And so I'm going to go over a couple of them that are on this slide. We started off with a new memorandum of understanding with the district, and it was important in the sense that the MOU had not been revisited by the governing board district and district leadership, as well as our board, for easily over a decade. And so it really helped provide some clarity around our relationship, and most critically, it really focused on tightly binding the two efforts together. You're the product, you're the delivery mechanism, and we're the philanthropic vessel that creates revenue to advance the mission and the purposes of the college and the district. So we accomplished that. We so appreciate the governing board last December approving the MOU, and we're living it every day. The next thing was to make sure that our board, that we had a broad-based give-and-get policy, that's been done. Board members contribute personal dollars, as well as have a debt dollar amount that's required with their membership. We developed goals with the Resource Development Council, and it's important to note, as you see other material in this deck, how critical the Resource Development Council is both to colleges, as well as the foundation. And those resource development officers each work for a college, and we work together in collaboration, generating revenue, achieving our goals that are set forth by the council. The integration with the district leadership, I want to thank Dr. Gonzalez, our chancellor, for continuing to work with the foundation in being a part of the very critical conversations that are happening at a district level. We participate with the Maricopa Expanded Leadership Council, as well as the Chancellor's Executive Council, so that we are, again, following and running parallel to the goals, the efforts that are coming out of the district and colleges. We set revenue targets. I'm going to go into that in a little bit. We've established, as you saw by our board, a strong workforce and industry orientation. And this year, we are communicating foundation impact. We have a newsletter that goes out every other month, and so we're really proud of articulating the quality of the work that's happening in the colleges, as well as the foundation, so we generate more revenue. And then we've initiated award tracking. I'll be going into a gold standard concept in a few slides down the way. What's really important is the ability for us to now engage with our alumni and provide stewardship goals around that. You'll be seeing more of that. We launched our plan giving campaign, which was highlighted in the assessment, as well as work to create a sustainable spending rate. That spending rate is related to the dollars that are pulled from our investments to support scholarship. So we looked at best practices, looked at some of the other education foundations, and developed a sustainable spending rate. Where we have work to do is hiring a permanent CEO, president, looking at that seat, working with the foundation hand in hand on a five-year development plan. You'll see in a few slides why that's important. You can see what that does to revenue. And then integrating with the district's strategic plan. We really want to run parallel, make sure we're generating opportunities to increase philanthropic revenue on those priorities that the district and colleges have. Next slide. And so I wanted to spend a little time talking about the gold standard. So when you think of 10 colleges, the district, and the foundation, what are the characteristics that need to be similar in the way of a framework, in the way of a standard around philanthropy? And the foundation being a strategic leadership in philanthropy was really important, and that was covered exceptionally well in the MOU. And so it's really about connecting the districts, the colleges, with our philanthropic partners. And an example that you saw in our newsletter recently was the Helios Grant that created a $1.2 million endowed fund to support our students in perpetuity. And that took leadership from the foundation, leadership from the district, and specifically the chancellor and the provost, and then a partnership and collaboration with those colleges that were affected. It was complex. It was full of opportunities for it not to work, and we were able to get it accomplished. But that is really important in terms of having the leadership engaged in philanthropy. The second area is to keep planning an organizational structure. What this is, is this is about each college having a plan and reporting to the president. There are certain characteristics around success in philanthropy, and making sure there is a structure that we've got give-and-get policies throughout the organization, and we've got a comprehensive fundraising and development strategy, in that it's aligned. It's aligned in the organizational structures of colleges, the foundation, and the district. The third area is accountability around fundraising, and that is using metrics. You'll see some of those today, as well as reporting out our progress to the chancellor, to our college presidents, by the RDC, and so forth. The last area is really about implementing district-wide best practices. And so you'll see in today's presentation, a new idea that we wanted to launch in April of this year, but COVID changed that for all of us, and that is a branded district-wide, all colleges Day of Giving for Maricopa. And it would be community-based. Obviously, our faculty and staff would be invited to join, but it would be a heavy social media approach, and so I'll talk a little more about that. But that is a best practice. Some of the large college systems across the country have a Day of Giving and are doing exceptionally well in raising dollars. Additionally, we want to increase the culture of philanthropy across the district and the colleges. At the end of today's presentation, you'll see a philanthropy statement that speaks to this idea of a culture of philanthropy, which would include employee giving, alumni giving, and create the expectation around participating in philanthropy. So we move to the next slide, where I get into a little more detail. So there was an interest in understanding what the foundation provides to the district. And beyond scholarships, we're that 501(c)(3) vessel for any philanthropy that comes into the district and the colleges. And then we're also providing program support. So we raise money around scholarships and programs. And program supports can include emergency funding, and I'll go into a little more detail on the success we had with our COVID response, as well as material support for students and faculty and programs. And then the foundation, actually, by existing, is providing a contribution to the benefit of the district through our marketing and communications efforts, the grantsmanship, providing a database, a donor database that's comprehensive, that covers alumni, covers our donors, as well as legal counsel and community engagement. Additionally, the last several years, our board has contributed directly from the foundation's operating budget to our scholarship funds, so that we had extra funds to provide over the course of the last two years to reach more students. Next slide. And so within what I just discussed, you can see, over a period of time, the expenditures that benefit the college and district scholarship program, the program supports, and our operating contribution. And what's important about this slide, and the next slide that you'll see, is when the foundation had a broad-based campaign that was geared into philanthropy, you saw increased revenue. And in this slide, you can see a slight decrease in the 2019 and 2020. The teal-colored bar is down, and we hit some headwinds around that. And our total scholarships were down a little bit, our total program supports, but you can see our operating contribution increased from the foundation to help square up our capacity to deliver benefits to the district. And so the next slide will show then revenue. So you saw the expenditure going out. This is the revenue coming in to the foundation, and it's showing our fiscal year '21 goal. But I want to point out again, '13, '14, '15, '16, and '17, and '18, that was when the foundation was deeply involved in a broad, community-based campaign. And that's really important, because we want to have another broad-based community campaign. The timing of that is critical, in the sense that we couldn't launch anything this year, because it's a campaign year on federal and state and local political campaign, and that would be not the time to compete. We also really need to have the leadership of the district behind a broad-based campaign. So I would suspect in the next year or so, we would have a strategic plan around developing and initiating a broad-based campaign that would bring in larger dollars. And that's why you see the $6.6 million, et cetera. And you can see, when there isn't a campaign, we're hitting in the fours and five million. So that is a goal of our board, is to look at how we bend the needle. Now, given that, and the drop-off between $6.6 million in '18-'19 to $5.2 million in the year we just wrapped up, I'm going to share with you some of the headwinds we experienced. So the next slide. So factors affecting revenue, generations from philanthropy. We experienced leadership changes, the chancellor's retirement in February, March, the fact that we had turnover in our resource development officers at colleges at about a 40% rate, and the search for a new chancellor were put on hold. It's really important to note that when we're dealing with asks that represent a half a million, even a quarter of a million, that leadership, the ability to have leadership participate in those asks with our large foundations and corporate partners is critical. Now, this isn't about our fantastic interim chancellor. Dr. Gonzalez has been engaged in all of those big conversations. It's more about the policies some of our larger foundations and corporations have around permanent leadership position. And so we're not stopping because of that policy. We're out there asking, but it is a headwind. The other piece was in that year of '17-'18, you saw the campaign payment wind down. And so when you have a broad-based campaign, you're going to have money pledged over a period of time, and eventually it winds down, and we had that wind down between '18-'19 and '19-'20. And then I don't need to go into anything around the COVID-19 thing, except to say, unfortunately, a lot of our strongest corporate foundations put their giving to education on hold, as they wanted to assess what the community's needs were around addressing COVID, and it was basic needs. So as a foundation, which isn't known for basic needs, we're known for our education efforts, we needed to compete very differently for those corporate dollars, and we did. And so with that, those were the factors that we kind of ran into in '19 and '20, but that is what it is, and we see opportunity ahead. So you saw on the prior slide, our goal of reaching $5.7 million this year. Thank you, Elsa. That is a 10% increase, and so we're leaving no stone unturned. And we do this knowing full well. Next two slides. Yeah, we still know, we're coming out of a recession mild. We still have COVID-19. We're continuing to work with the foundation's capacity, as well as our Resource Development Council's capacity, and the idea of a search for a new chancellor. So with that, I'm going to share the opportunities we see on being able to increase revenue. Next slide. So I mentioned Be a Student's Hero, a district-wide. All of these are really building. We're laying a firm foundation, a firm platform for the foundation's success over the next several years. Launching this Be a Student's Hero will be really, really important in doing that well, and doing that in April, during the months that set aside its community colleges' appreciation month. The emergency relief appeals that we put in place for COVID-19 response, recent increase in our capacity for development, as well as having access to employee alumni and retiree data, so we can focus on stewardship and cultivation with those populations increasing revenue. A biggie that's going to lay the long-term success for the foundation is the plan giving campaign. We've initiated that. We have an incredible consultant. I'll go into a little more detail on the progress we've made in a few short months around this. And then working with the presidents and the Resource Development Council members around their fundraising priorities. Really, again, binding our revenue tightly to the goals that are being established by presidents, colleges, and the district. The last two areas, we think there's immediate low-hanging fruit, and that's the workforce development fundraising. We've obtained a development officer who is going to focus and run alongside the colleges and the district, as workforce development strategies are initiated, with the expectation that there would also be investments in scholarships and program supports for our students, so that as we're meeting the pipeline needs of our community, they're supporting pipeline and access and affordability for our students. The last area is Mesa Promise pilot. There's an opportunity, and we've been fortunate in that Mesa Community College leadership, the president there, the resource development officer, are letting us run alongside what is really a unique opportunity, where the city is actually engaging in raising dollars for scholarships and for students' access to the community college. And so these are our opportunities, and we think we're going to be able to move forward.
And this is Rudy Parga. I just wanted to add to laying out, the foundation is fully committed to the opportunities that have been identified, and we are continually looking for new opportunities of new revenue generation, unrestricted dollars, et cetera. And we are very committed to being able to explore potential partnerships that might create some different types of opportunities that the district has not had an opportunity to explore in the past. So I just wanted to add to that as well, that I think particularly in the environment that we all find ourselves in, having many different opportunities, a broad-based that we all find ourselves in, having many different opportunities, a broad-based and diverse type of opportunity is very, very important to move forward. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah. When I first came to the foundation, this idea of having an earned revenue stream was important. And we've seen other community colleges, other post-secondary institutions, universities be very successful at tying an earned income stream in their fill-in slot. The next slide really summarizes how we came to our projections for fiscal year 2021 and our goal. And you can see that how the dollars are allocated across the foundation, our grants, college-specific funds, as well as planned giving. And planned giving is really about committed, documented, planned gifts, gifts that are documented and not revocable. We also have a couple of new efforts with E-Team sponsors, working with our athletes, working with our affinity groups that are emerging across the colleges. And I've already spoken about Be a Student's Hero. I am close to being done. I'm just going to wrap through a couple of things to give you some good news. So around our scholarship. And we'll go to slide 16. Yes?
We're having a bit of a hard time hearing both you and Mr. Parga. I just wanted to let you know that Mr. Parga has been promoted to a panelist, so he should be able to connect on his own computer. And if you could, if I could just ask you to speak up just a little bit, please?
Sure, apologies.
No, 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 thank you, sir.
Yeah, we'll move to slide 16. Unless I need to go back, I'm sure you guys don't want me to keep talking, but happy to. So what?
Brian, excuse me. Brian, this is Marie. What I notice with your sound is you go in and out, so it fluctuates quite a bit. And I appreciate that you've presented quite a lot of material, which we all, probably most of us have heard. But for example, just now, you started strong and then disappeared, at least from my end. And I don't think I'm alone in that regard. So I'm not sure if there's some way you can speak into the microphone differently or what, but we want to be sure to capture all the important information you're sharing with us.
I am.
There you go.
Is this better?
It is for me right now.
Okay, so.
Much better.
All right.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, yeah, we had some technical difficulties at the startup and so, but appreciate your time. I wanted to review a little bit about our scholarship program. And this is fiscal year, so in 2019, we had 321 volunteer reviewers. And this year, because of our work with the colleges and the outreach and our business partners, we achieved 718 reviewers. And I'll tell you, our business partners get excited. And I'm just going to call out State Farm. They have granted us some $200,000, much of it for scholarships. And their employees are deeply engaged in the reviewing. And so we see this as kind of a virtuous cycle. It excites people. They see the value of their contribution. So we're going to continue to really push for our corporate partners to be volunteer reviewers. Obviously, faculty and staff are deeply engaged. But look at the applications between 19 and 20. I wish I could say our revenue increased at the rate that our applications did, but I've already talked a little bit about the headwinds that we had. But we want to see that moving in the future. But you can see that our students are having greater access to our scholarship process. Next slide. I think the other real important thing to note was how quickly, not only did our colleges do an incredible job of moving and responding to student success through the COVID crisis, but the foundation pivoted. I shared earlier, we aren't known for student emergency assistance. We aren't known for doing basic needs. In fact, in the year, fiscal year prior to '20, in that 1819 period, we gave out about $7,000 in program support. So when COVID hit, the foundation team, the staff, we had to figure out how to be able to achieve student support digitally. We had to innovate with how we made sure people had access to food and groceries and did so to the point where the average turnaround time for student supports as a result of COVID was 1.4 days. We actually lowered it than what it had been prior. Now, the total award amount as of September 17th shows 178,000. I can tell you today, we're at 210,000 in awards. And you can see the top categories of need. And we're hoping downstream, we can do some data mining that would let you as a governing board, let our donors know what impact the awards had on our students with retention and persistence. Next slide, please. Grants, we're doing great work there. We've ginning out a slew of them. You can see 3.3 million awarded, we're 1.1, that's a 35% award rate. This year, the current year we're in, we're at about an 80% award rate. Now, that'll change in time, but I'm listing here some really important highlights. I mentioned State Farm, 200,000. Horizon came to us through one of our board members, and we competed nationally for a grant that provided paid internships. As I was meeting with presidents, that was one of the top priorities, was the need for paid internships for our students. Scholarships were great, but we need paid internships. And then the Salt River Tribe, the 12% set aside, 100,000 there, as well as emergency funding support from our other tribal partners, and Santander Consumer and Kroger. Right now, we're in the middle of grants, Chase Grant. We're working with Darcy Renfro and her team around a quarter of a million dollar grant that would go towards increasing capacity around IT and technology. And then working with the folks at Gateway and the College Entrepreneurship and Innovation, the center there, Flynn Foundation Grant of 300,000. So we're going to continue to double down on our grant writing. So as I hurtled towards the end of my presentation, I wanted to go over a couple more slides, and then we'll open it up for questions. The next slide gets into some specifics on planned giving. And while launching it in February 2020, and part of planned giving is, you know, it's not like throwing a light switch. There's a lot of research that goes in, there's a lot of finesse that goes in, and we needed somebody to help us move that initiative forward. And so the foundation acquired a consultant who is a chartered advisor in philanthropy, familiar with post-secondary education entities, and that person has been guiding the colleges and the foundation in moving a long-term planned giving program. We're building a website for that. Seven of 10 colleges are now participating in the program. We expect that all 10 will. And then we're building strategic plans, we're tracking goal and measuring success. And then we already know that we've got four donors who've made legacy gift commitments to the foundation and colleges in their estate plan. So this is a long-term play, but critical for the foundation and the system. The next slide are the RDC goals for 2021. All of these goals roll into our revenue goal, and I really appreciate the work of each one of those development officers with the college that are working so collaboratively and so closely in advancing these goals. So we'll be following our success with these goals. Last year, we achieved over 80% of our goals, and we're excited about this. So we're being very clear on what we need to do, and we're being very clear on how we get there. The last slide is kind of a cute slide. This is Be a Student's Hero. It's going to be this kind of fun stuff and social media, and so we're excited about that. You'll be hearing more about that as spring comes upon us, and it will occur during Community College Month. The last slide I'm going to show before Rudy and I entertain questions is a philanthropy statement. You recall the culture of philanthropy was an important part of the assessment, that successful colleges, universities, et cetera, have a deep-set cultural philanthropy. And so it was important for the foundation, through its work with the Resource Development Council, the members of the CEC, the Faculty Association. This statement has been vetted across the system, and this is a building block. Does this statement in and of itself bring money in? No, but it is the concept that will bring revenue in and resources for our students, and it lays it out there. So we're excited that we have a philanthropy statement, and this is the next step of building a culture of philanthropy. And we'd like this to be part of the new employee orientation, et cetera, so that we're building on our success. So with that, I'm going to see if Rudy, are you, Rudy stepped away. We were sharing.
I am, Brian. Brian, I am. And I just, thank you, Brian. And as Brian indicated, we would like to see if there are any questions. We understand that we have presented a significant amount of information. I think that demonstrates that there's a lot of good work that continues despite some of the challenges that Brian indicated, particularly with COVID. And to borrow a phrase that Brian uses, we're leaving no rock unturned in terms of continuing to focus on the mission of the foundation and why we're all here and why we're doing this. So with that, I open it up to any questions that anyone may have for Brian or myself.
Thank you, Mr. Parga. This is Marie Sullivan. Wanted to thank both you and Brian for a very thorough presentation, sharing a lot of information. And certainly, in spite of all of the challenges this year, it's been a good working year for you. And I wanted to say, Brian, at your philosophy statement and your comment about putting, inserting it into onboarding for employees, it would probably be good as an onboarding component to board onboarding as well, so we can work together to craft that for the upcoming onboarding that will be occurring soon. With that, then, as we normally do with board members for ease of keeping, I'm just going down the list with you, and let's see, and then we can open up beyond. So I'm going to, Mr. Hendrix, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not have any questions, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath, do you have any questions or comment? So she, I'm unclear. Oh, there you are.
No.
Okay. McGrath, you're passing for questions and comments. Moving on, Dr. Narini.
No, I just want to thank you, thank both you for the great presentation and all the work you're doing. But it's, yeah, we got lots of work to do, but it looks like you've got a good head start on it. Well, thank you.
Mr. Sarr.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, I guess. A while back, the foundation members came to the board members with an idea about putting together a revenue source based on on-campus housing. Have there been any further discussions about that amongst the board?
So.
President Sullivan, go ahead, go ahead, Brian, go ahead.
No, there has not been a specific project, governing board member Sarr, President Sullivan, but there continues to be an interest in our board actively engaging as opportunities arise with colleges. And I, and Chancellor, I don't know if you have any thoughts on this as it relates to creating some strategies around earned income?
Thank you, Brian, President Sullivan, Mr. Sarr. You're right, it has been some time since we've had a conversation regarding off-campus housing. I was serving on the foundation as the president representative at the time, and that seemed to just fizzle out. We never really got a real reason as to why, perhaps it just lacked the support. It wasn't right timing. I'm not sure, never got a good answer to that. But one of the things that we haven't completely backed away from is this notion of being able to find ways for the colleges and the district as a whole to generate revenue, much the way that off-campus housing might, but perhaps so using some other opportunities. Corporate college is a perfect example of one that can generate revenue. Sometimes we're bound by random policies and procedures, so what we're looking for at times is a way, much the way that Arizona State University has created their enterprise partnership, and able to forge or form perhaps a similar format for that. I don't have any of those details, that's something that we're exploring, but we're deeply interested in having this revenue generating arm for a district. You know, there's no reason why we couldn't come up with something that we could count on consistently to produce maybe in a low million, millions, but we've got to start somewhere. So thank you for your question, Mr. Sarr.
Thanks for your answer.
Mr. Sarr, President Sullivan, this is Rudy Parga. I will just add to that, to what the chancellor and Brian both said, and let you know that this is a concept that the board continues to be firmly committed to. If there is the support for the board to ultimately continue to evaluate and come back with some concrete ideas, we are all in in terms of doing that. When we engaged in this process earlier that the chancellor mentioned, there was a lot of the legwork that had been completed at that point. We have the good fortune of having membership on the current foundation board that has specific expertise in these types of opportunities. So by all means, if there is that support from the governing board, we would love to receive that type of direction because we certainly have the motivation and skill to be able to, as the chancellor indicated and Brian, to move forward on this opportunity.
Very good. Thanks. Thanks to all of you. My other question, it really might be for the chancellor, and I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, Dr. Gonzalez, but going back to one of those first slides, I wonder why Brian is still an interim CEO and not a permanent position. I think it's time we do that, if that's possible.
President Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, you know, as with any open position or district, we've got some at this, we've got open positions at senior level, including the chancellor's office that needs some permanency as soon as possible. So I will be bringing forward to the board something for consideration as a, as a, as a plan of how we fill this particular position and perhaps some of the other key district-wide positions that have been in for far.
Yeah, I appreciate that. But just to remind you, Brian serves actually two different boards. The foundation board, obviously, they make a recommendation, I'm sure, to our chancellor for this. And in fact, our board really has no input directly in the hiring of that position. So I'm going to put the onus on you, chancellor, to make sure that we've got somebody in place as soon as we can to make all this stuff that's been talked about tonight happen.
President Sullivan, understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Sarr?
That's enough for me.
President Sullivan, this is Rudy Parga. May I add just one brief comment?
Sure.
Thank you. I just would like to add that conversations on the issue identified by Mr. Sarr have been ongoing with the chancellor, and he has been absolutely open and supportive with respect to those conversations. We always have understood that, like many things, sometimes it's a timing issue, but the chancellor has, from day one, been very supportive of the concept. And beyond that, he has also been someone that has been incredibly accessible to the foundation and we are most appreciative for his leadership throughout this process. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Parga. And yes, we're looking forward to seeing that presentation, Dr. Gonzalez, as we've discussed. So anyway, with that, then, moving on to Dr. Thor, any comments or questions?
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I do have several questions and some comments. First, I want to thank both Brian and Rudy for this presentation, which was very, very informative. And I certainly encourage you to periodically return and update the board in this, this fashion. And thank you for the breakdown of where your board members fall in terms of community representation. Do you currently have a full complement of board members? And if not, are there specific areas that you're looking to fill?
Yes, we have a very strong board development committee and we're in the middle of that. We do reach into our district partners, Darcy Renfro, the chancellor provost. We look for feedback in terms of where we can best align, not only today, but what are the future ID, what are the future sectors that the foundation could be looking into? We will have a few seats and we're always open to ideas of individuals that would help, you know, put their shoulder and build the philanthropy to support our colleges.
Very good. Thank you. And I was pleased to see some emphasis on alumni giving. So often in community colleges, alumni are dismissed as possible donors, thinking about them as being early in their career and not really able to make significant donations. However, they do progress in their careers and ultimately should be able to be a significant donor base. But it's important that we continue to communicate with them through all of those years. So two questions. What is your definition of an alumnus? Is it someone who's received a certificate degree or degree, or someone who's simply taken a course or courses with us? And then secondly, how good are our records regarding our alumni? Have we been able to keep up with current contact information?
Thank you for those questions, President Sullivan, governing board member, Mrs. Thor. I have, in all of this work, we all stand on the shoulders of others. And I'm going to just take a moment before answering that question, for having Judy Sanchez, who is the Director of Development and College Relations and works with the Alumni Council, answer those questions. But I have to tell you, we stand on the shoulders and the support of so many individuals like Judy Sanchez, like others that work in the colleges with alumni engagement, with resource development, as well as Jonathan Robles, who co-chairs the Resource Development Council. And Jonathan and Judy are both panelists today to handle some of those detailed questions, Dr. Thor. So with that, I'm going to see if Judy or Jonathan are on, are off mute. Thought I heard Judy for a moment.
Yes, just testing the system to see if I can be heard or not.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, Dr. Thor, thank you for the question. So with 10 community colleges, each college wants to be, to use the definition of alumni as liberally as possible. So if an alumnus identifies with a college because they attended a class and they want to be considered an alumnus, we count them. For tracking purposes through our student information system, when we get the data through that system, we are getting graduates and certificate holders. So that's the data that we're getting as a tracking mechanism. But each college, if they have alumni who self-identify, we also count them and include them in our alumni.
Very good. Thank you. And then finally, I want to comment on planned giving. And, oh, my echoing? Okay. And Brian and Rudy, I think I've mentioned this to you before. You are talking about initiating a planned giving effort. And here I revert back to my unofficial Maricopa historian role. But there was a planned giving effort in the district many years ago. And the legacy wall that exists in the lobby of the district office contains the names of people who committed to planned giving at that time. So if you have not had an opportunity to do so, I would encourage you to spend a little time looking at that wall and making sure that the people who are listed there are still living up to their commitment of many years ago.
President Sullivan, thank you, governing board member, Dr. Thor. Yes, they are on our prospect list. We love that wall and will be moving that forward, as well as similar approaches that each college is taking with some of their long-lived supporters. And so I appreciate that comment.
Very good. Thank you. That concludes my questions, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Ms. Nguyen, your turn.
Thank you. I'll just take a moment. I just wanted to thank both Rudy and Brian for the, this assessment of everything that they've been working on. I think it says a lot during COVID, when so many people were shut down, that they pivoted to meet the needs of our students and did things that were out of the box for the, for the foundation to do, but yet were very proactive and looked for other resources. And in a time when people weren't giving and people were withdrawing their donations, they still managed to exceed the previous year. And I think that says a lot for who they are as leaders and the work that they're doing. I, I would also just like to encourage some of the things that you've stated, which is continuing to work with our business leaders in the community to provide those workforce jobs, that these scholarships will be providing workforce jobs. And I think that alone, if we really tap into the industry and the economics of our community, that can be a great victory for the foundation by providing trained workforce by use of these scholarships. I really like what you said about State Farm taking ownership by reviewing the applications. And I think we could expand that. And so I just want to say thank you for all your work, for everything that you do and for your commitment to our students. This is key and central to our success. And hopefully this helps us with our enrollment and other issues as we go forward. And I agree with you, we need to find a new chancellor and fill some of these gaps. And, and Brian, as an interim, you've been exceptional. So hopefully we can remedy that situation very shortly. And I thank you for all your work. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Nguyen. So I have just, I think I've remembered now, all board members, I'm going to go back just quickly to Mrs. McGrath one more time. And Mrs. McGrath, are you there? So then to continue, I again want to repeat my, oh, Mrs. McGrath, do you have any comments or questions?
Presentation is interesting and they're very capable and I'm pleased with the work they're doing.
Thank you. So with that, I again want to add my thanks to the other board members, to you, Brian, and to you, Mr. Parga. But I also want to acknowledge your foundation board and thank all of the leaders who are supporting the philanthropic interests of the district and certainly all of the donors and their contribution, albeit very small donors to the very large ones, which of course calls out the good work you did with the chancellor and others in our district to bring back the Helios money. Think that was a very good accomplishment. And I also appreciate the innovation that you're working with and giving with State Farm and other community capacities. Having done fundraising myself in my previous life, I can tell you, I don't envy you your challenges. And I certainly appreciate the direction that you're taking, the foundation and its work. I want to encourage us then, also as a board, working with the foundation board and this, and the district, and how we're going to, at some point, link the strategic plan goals of the board aligned with the district and certainly then aligned with the foundation. So I look forward to that work going forward. And as you entertain board development, membership, certainly thinking about entities such as Helios and others to be partners with us in that foundation framework, I think would be really good. And the last thing I want to comment on is the appreciation that I have, that each individual college has developed, no pun, at some level, their own development programs, but the creation of a consistent practice and the synergy that can come if everyone is working collaboratively, I think can be such a boon and a benefit. So those are just my overarching comments. And again, want to say thank you for a fine presentation this afternoon. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Brian and Mr. Parga, for any last comments, unless a board member has anything else they'd like to add.
President Sullivan, governing board members, chancellor, I would just like to say thank you again for allowing us this opportunity to present today. It means a lot to all of us and I do appreciate the recognition to the many individual members of our board who so willingly give of their time, talent, and treasure to support the mission. And finally, I'd like to again thank Brian for all of his leadership in his role and hope everyone continues to stay safe and healthy and have a good evening.
Well, thank you very much. Brian, any last comment?
Yeah, President Sullivan, governing board members and chancellor, it's, it's an honor and a privilege to be part of such an amazing group of leaders with our colleges, with our development officers, being, really have a lasting legacy that we're creating in the community, the community that we want. And so I appreciate the support of our board and the support of the district and the governing board. So we've got a great team. We're going to keep at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Dr. Gonzalez, any last comment for the good of the order right now?
Thank you, President Sullivan. I think much has been said and I wouldn't be repeating a lot, but I do want to personally thank Brian and I want to thank Rudy for serving us here. And as I always do, to really thank the board members and especially those that dig into their pockets and give to our foundation so that our students can have better opportunities to focus on success than not so much having to worry about the funds that they need to survive each day. So thank you and we appreciate the opportunity to come to you this evening and provide this presentation.
Thank you. So with that, guests and board members, this is going to conclude our work session. It is essentially 5:10, maybe 5:08. I'd like to give us a five-minute break or let's just say that at 5:15, I will convene the agenda review for the board. So I will see you in about nine minutes or six minutes. How's that? Seven minutes? So don't go away. There's no re-sign in or anything. It's just, we'll, I'll call us to order in seven minutes. Thank you.